I don't see the minutes in our folder, so motion to move to next meeting.
Motion to move to next meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, all is in favor?
I already read the minutes. It just brings you to check it right now. Whoever did it, dispelled my name, so. You can look into that.
I didn't see any minutes.
There was an email or something.
Yeah. I looked at it Saturday. Maybe I'll look at the old one.
Okay. The public to address the board. This is a time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda for any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask you to do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company slash institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than thirty minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the chair if there does need. Be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the board, please make that request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Is there anyone that wants to speak to any items on the agenda?
I might want to speak to number nine. If I have to say it now.
Nine?
Possibly.
Future items?
Future items?
Excuse me?
No, number nine is the playing fields.
Yeah, continued discussion regarding the playing fields?
None of mine. Number eight is...
Do I not have a... What's that?
You've got March nineteenth. That's today.
Looks like you may not have got...
Well, thank you. We'd like to know what's going on.
Here's the last thing. Okay.
Looking to the camera when you say that.
Okay.
I guess it's real life. People make mistakes.
Yes, Jenny, let's just chime in off the playing fields.
Henry Rose, North Mountain Road.
No, you don't have to say it now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, item six. Discussion of a corporation of a gift from Robert Fox, revocable trust. Ken, will you entertain us with this?
Well, you seem to, I think you've dealt with this in the past, but we're sure how to handle this bequest of $2,000 from the estate of Robert Fox. And, uh... So, we aren't the holders of the trust. We're just the beneficiaries. A gift from the trust. So, I went to town council, and there's an email in here from the town council, Joel Byrd, regarding to how to handle it. And so, this is like any other gift that is handled under chapter forty-four, section fifty-three A. You typically have a resolution accepting the gift and then set it aside for the purposes for which the gift is given. So, council's told us that's how to handle it, and the next time we meet, I'll have a resolution for it.
I think we did, didn't we?
We voted to accept it.
That was the question. The question was, how do we transmit the $2,000 to the CRA?
Oh, okay. So, I didn't understand the question. Just like we do with... Well, it has to be spent for the purposes for which it was given, which is for recreational purposes, but not including salaries or maintenance or construction of buildings. Okay, we can just give it out as a grant. Do you want to supplement the grant we give to the CRA for recreational purposes, or do you want to replace some of the funding? Depends how you want to do it. There's no...
We didn't know whether we should designate it specifically for a particular youth program or how to really designate it to the CRA. I believe that we discussed not lumping it into their...
Right, but it was an addition to. It was an addition.
A separate...
But it's a separate gift.
A separate article, so we can differentiate the $2,000 that goes to the CRA for youth sports programs.
It doesn't have to go back to town meeting. It can be appropriated, because you don't need a further appropriation for it. It can just be expended.
Well, we, I mean, I think Mr. Fox was specific.
Oh, yeah.
In this money going to there. So, if we do it that way.
Right.
It's specified forever.
Can we ask the CRA to request it for a certain program?
Yeah, they can make a proposal to the town.
And then we can give the $2,000 towards that request?
Yeah, because it can, under forty-four fifty-three A, it can be expended without further appropriation. So, as long as we're spending it in accordance with the terms of bequest. Okay? So, they can make a proposal to us to spend on recreational programs as long as it complies with the terms of bequest.
Okay, also on the resolution, if you could take a look at the back page. They were looking for a signature on something.
Oh, yeah.
You can just take a look at that.
Right.
You're gonna handle that one quickly, sure. Okay, department budgets reviews and budget updates.
So, simply, we can start by looking at the schedule. We'll look at the budget afterwards. There's a budget update in there, but if we look at the schedule, we're right down from last week, March nineteenth, and you can see the different budgets that we're going to be looking at this evening.
Do you have any copies of that, so we can see soon?
No, I'm sorry. We don't have extra copies of them.
Where are you looking at the...
I'm looking at the bottom of the schedule, under March nineteenth. And you can see, we'll just simply go in numerical order. Okay, I'd like to compliment particularly town accountant Sandy Obano, who did enormous amount of work preparing these budgets tonight, and town treasurer, Don Fahey, who also participated in preparation of these budgets. So, the first one is the town accountant. And Sandy is here, so I'll talk very briefly, and then I'll let her speak about her own budget. So, you can see that the town accountant's budget is up by $1,600 overall, two percent. Very small amount of expenses, and the salaries are increased by the amount of the cost of living from the service of ninety employees. Sandy, would you like to add to that?
The only addition in my budget besides the salaries is our software support, our accounting software support, is up five percent, as it is every year since we've had this software. So, that's the only increase I've got. So, if you have other questions, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
Any thoughts for Sandy on this? TA?
Next budget is Department one fifty-two. Uh, it gets, the title keeps expanding. It's tough on internet and email services. And you can see that's up by 5.4 percent. The only increase is in the internet and email. You remember that last year, we changed over to DaltonMA-gov, added new emails, going through the Microsoft three sixty-five hosted exchange, and that's resulted in the $1,000 increase that you see there. Sandy, anything you'd like to add?
No, in addition, we also had to add a better internet access service at the highway department, 'cause the former company that we're using were, they were not able to make that connection work for the highway department, so we had to change them over to Spectrum Business, which is who really provides mostly all of our other internet service. So, that made a little more of an increase than what had been paid before by the former.
The D S L service.
We've discussed this with regard to emails, our emails specifically. Ken, can Judy contact Bill and have them put our business emails and our names associated with it, you know, the select board emails? Those of us that are done it on our website.
You want the emails on the website?
Yeah, at least I do.
All five should be on here.
All right, as long as everyone has...
Yeah, now you want to keep the same nomenclature. It's like word one, not your names.
But associated with, you know, our names associated with whatever the email, our email address is. You know what I'm saying?
Anything else? TA?
Next is vocational education. And you can see that's, the projection is a decrease of over fourteen percent or seventy-six thousand dollars. And I think that's primarily due to the headcount, transportation rate. It's, has an inflation factor built into it based on the producer price index and the tuition we expect to go off. And Sandy did a very nice job of looking at year by year the cohorts in vocational education, and then looking at the increases over the past five years or so. Anything else Sandy would like to add?
No, the only issue with this budget is going to be whether or not the state increases the rate for tuition above what I have on here. Those rates were not available. They normally are not available until like the end of April, beginning of June or May. So, I just gave a two and a half percent increase using the proposition two and one and a half percent requirement, and hopefully they come in under that number. Otherwise, we'll have to take a look at it at another town meeting.
And there are three, we budgeted for three extra from what it shows on the list. So, we always knew that we were a few extra.
Is the decrease because we overbudgeted last year, and now we're underbudgeting? Because it appears that we have the same number of students, eighteen from last year to this coming year?
We had twenty-five we budgeted last year.
Right, that's what I mean. We budgeted for twenty-five, but we only had eighteen.
Correct.
Right.
So, now we're budgeting for twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
It's based on what I get sent from Central Berkshire. They give me an estimated number... First off, twelfth, eleventh, and tenth grades are not estimate. They're those who are actually attending, but the ninth graders who join in are normally the ones that take, do not take it. And like when September comes, they decide they don't want to go. And so, that's why you see a lot of reductions over the other years, mainly ninth graders who showed an interest, made an application, but decided not to go. So, that's, could still happen with the twenty-one that I have budgeted, but I only have what they're giving me to...
Which right now is eighteen.
No, right now it's twenty-one.
It is twenty-one.
Yeah, FY eighteen, the original budget was twenty-five, if you noticed at the bottom.
Yeah.
But actually, what we're paying for right now is eighteen.
Right.
And in the past...
We have totals in FY nineteen of eighteen plus three. Do you have that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we do. There's three extra that I always...
That's three extra just because?
Yes.
Okay.
Because sometimes, like, I could get another schedule, like in April, and it has those three already on there. So, then we might be short if all of them decide to stay.
We typically budget for a few unanticipated placements, because we never know, because it closes out. We have to adopt this budget prior to the deadline for sending up a revocable. That's the problem.
In the past, at a special town meeting in the fall, once we've determined that there are significant numbers not going, we've reduced that budget before the tax rate set.
Another time.
So, the transportation is, it doesn't matter if there's one or twenty going?
Correct.
That's the daily rate?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, TA?
Okay, the next budget is number four twenty-four, streetlights. Didn't see anything for an outstanding analysis. We've got lots of data from the past. Shows you what the rates have been. The main difference this year is that our supply cost has gone up, I think, two cents per kilowatt hour, based on the latest bid that we got in the fall. And so, that has really made the difference. And anything else you'd like to add, Sandy, about this?
No, that's basically it. So, in the fall, those rates, the rate increase for the supplier part, and some of the rates in the delivery, which is Eversource, also increased. And the rates that increased, although not by much, were related to solar, believe it or not, but that's what I found out. The, let's see, the solar program cost adjustment increased, the, what was another thing for solar here? Some transmission charges increased. The net metering recovery surcharge increased, or decreased actually, that one. No, it increased. So, coupled with the supplier rate has caused me to think that we might, first of all, not quite make FY eighteen, but, so that's why I decided to make nineteen a little bit more than eighteen was. So, hopefully, by the time June comes, we won't have to have a reserve fund transfer for streetlights for eighteen because of the increase.
Ken, when are we gonna put the energy saving bulbs on, or is that part of this coming year?
Yeah, well, we have the application, and we filed the application for money to put in another of these streetlights.
And that should have this way down to the sun. Any other questions? TA?
Next department is four thirty-four. That's transfer station. And the charges you see here, as you know, the transfer station is principally funded by user charges, but we also pay some amounts to have our garbage picked up, the town garbage picked up or crashed, and that's what you're seeing there. And there's the annual hazardous waste services, recycling services, and so forth beyond. What is paid? We pay to pick up.
Questions? TA?
The next department is four forty-nine, sewage treatment. And overall, those costs have remained steady. The very difficult thing here is, and the largest amount is, of course, intergovernmental sewer agreement with Pittsfield. This year, last year, you can see, was voted at nine hundred thousand. It came in nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars. This year, we're budgeting it at a million dollars. And we continue to have difficulty getting good numbers from the city of Pittsfield.
So, we don't have the number?
We don't have their estimates. We're just making, we make our own estimates.
Where do they stand in there, going up for their upgrade?
It was turned out by the city council, so I don't know where it's going.
That's true.
Yeah.
But of course, they're required by law to start the project in August of this year. They just don't have the money.
They don't have the money. Have the obligation, but not the money.
Do they take a check? Okay. Any other questions? TA?
TA. Okay. This is the first budget. You'll see now that we have the new arrangement with the city of North Adams and the regional veterans district. So, you'll see, first of all, that we deleted the salary portion of that budget. Well, we've increased the line item down below for the expenses, veteran service officer. That's the intermunicipal agreement. Remember, that's an office of two, provide services five days a week to the residents of Dalton, although we only still have one day of on-site services. I'm pleased to report that people are calling the veteran service officer in North Adams. Residents are taking advantage of that. Not good. It's regular speaking with people. Yeah, I'm really pleased with that.
What are the other towns that are in this agreement? Chester, Williamstown?
Chester, Williamstown, North Adams.
And Florida.
In Florida.
Somebody just joined. TA was in a quick...
Was it? I know Chester. Never been to Chester.
On our, on the website, under the Veterans Agent, it has the name and the number and the hours. But I don't think it has, 'cause he had made reference that if that didn't work, you could make an appointment in one of the other towns.
That's right.
Is that, I don't remember seeing that on the website.
Yeah, let me look at that. We should be up there.
And let people know that they can make appointments outside those hours?
I have an email from him, and it shows North Adams, Williamstown, and Clarkford, Florida, and Savoy. And it gives on his, it gives the times that he's there and a phone number, so that he has that on his email, but must not be on, what did you say? It wasn't...
The website.
Website.
I mean, it's our website.
Yeah.
I mean, it has his name and high contact and whatever. I don't believe it has those other towns and that you can make an appointment outside Dalton hours.
Then there are two other towns, Chester and Leesboro, aside from what Sandy mentioned, but those two towns don't have a scheduled timeframe for veterans to walk in. And I, what was his name that was here, Ken?
Steve Roy.
Steve Roy. When I asked him about emergency situations, he says you can call him anytime or show up at office hours anywhere. You don't necessarily need an appointment.
Yeah, Dalton, Adams, Williamstown, and North Adams have office hours.
Right. The others are by appointment only, like, I mean, Florida and...
Right, Savoy.
They don't have a...
Chester and Leesboro, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. What we've also gotten here are three, potential for three other veterans. So, you'll see that the veterans' benefits have gone up quite a bit, because we, of course, it's a little bit like vocational education. You don't necessarily come to the service, but we have a lot more presence out there, and so Sandy thought it wise, and I agree, that we budget for three additional veterans to be in the program this year. That's why the difference in that. And then, for the first time this year, there's a new line item. You'll see it's $2,000. It's for other charges and expenses. And that's, for, a number of you have spoken to me about the veterans plaque in the CRA, and from time to time, veterans have asked that their names be added. They were inducted into the service during a time of conflict as Dalton residents. We want to be able to do that. From the research I've done, I know that John and John have both done some research on it. It appears that originally, those plaques were placed there by the American Legion a number of years ago. Given what we're going to talk about, the Legion next, it's not realistic to expect them to update it, and so I'm recommending to you that we take on it responsibly, and I'm suggesting at least $2,000 to start it. I don't know how much that would cost, but at least that's a start.
Well, it's not our property. It's the CRA's property.
It is the CRA's property.
Okay. We need their permission if we were going to, if we were going to update or expand it.
Right.
I mean, it's a limited space now.
Yeah.
You're right. There are several people come to me over the years and ask, such and such is Ananya. How come?
Yeah.
And nobody, you're right. Nobody's ever pinned down who is responsible for it, either to be the Legion, the town, or the CRA. But now we're going to take it upon ourselves to be responsible for it?
That's what I'm suggesting.
Okay. I think that's a great idea, Ken.
It is.
But it has to be in conjunction with the CRA.
Of course.
If we're going to expand it.
Yeah.
I think it doesn't even include the Iraqi war or something like Gulf War or...
Right, we don't have the...
Yes, that war. I think it stops it, the Vietnam veterans.
It does.
Right. So, next thing, you'll be asked to expand it.
Yeah, if there's, if we find room there.
Yeah, right, exactly. All right, thanks. Step in the right direction.
Any other questions? TA?
One TA. Before we leave this budget, there's one thing I'd like to point out to. There's a letter in your packet from the American Legion asking for support for their post, and they sent, there's a letter, and on the back of that letter is a letter from an attorney that they asked to explain a law, which is section nine of chapter forty, which allows lease payments, the town to pay money to lease part of the building. I'm not exactly sure how this all works. It's new to me. I've been told that North Adams and Pittsfield do this. I asked our town council for some guidance on this. Apparently, under the law, we could pay up to $19,000 based on assessed valuation of the community. They haven't asked for a specific amount or shown me exactly where the need is. I've asked them to do that if they could, but in the meantime, I did go to town council. I had to go back to town council this time.
So, we could provide up to the amount that's listed? Is that saying that we have to?
We do not have to, no. I think what this law was originally intended to do was to allow communities to go out and lease, lease a place for a veterans' organization to meet. I think that's what the original intent of the law was. But as you know, many American Legion posts and VFW posts have their own places, and so I'm not sure how this would be structured. Now, so it's a little bit mystifying to me as to how this would be structured and how to dovetail it with the procurement laws of the state as well. It requires more exploration before we can do anything.
Would the VFW be requesting the same thing?
Well, I would expect that any veterans or Vietnam veterans, if they want to organize a chapter here, would be able to. If you look at, if you look at the laws, practically any veterans' organization that exists is eligible for the same kind of treatment.
Once we have some type of a determination, can we put it back on to the agenda?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, we could.
Okay. The next budget, we have seven tens, the first of the treasurer's budget, and you can see, but I prepared, Sandy, Dawn, and I all collaborated on this, because this is the debt service, and it's, of course, we know exactly what we're paying in principal and interest on those projects which have been closed, but there's always a question of timing on borrowings as to when interest and principal payments would be made. And so, this is our best estimate of including some of the newer projects that we have as to what the debt service would be, and it's a little bit less than last year, about twelve percent less. And as we start to finish up some of these capital improvement projects, then it's going to rise, of course. Dawn, is there anything you'd like to add?
No.
Okay.
TA?
TA.
Next budget is Department nine fourteen, group health insurance. Includes a PPO, the HMO medics, which is for our retirees and the dental expenses. Projection is down slightly, just under two percent from last year, which is good news. Although the overall premiums are up, I think the headcount is down, and that's why the total budget is a little bit less.
Questions? TA?
The next department is nine fifteen, group life insurance. As you know, we provide group life insurance policies for our active and retired employees. And there's, we're estimating about forty-seven active and forty-seven... And there's, we're estimating about 47 active and 47 retirees, including five new enrollments, with a 2% overall increase. So between the 2% increase and the new, the projected new enrollments, the entire budget will go up by 5% for its only $883.
Questions? TA?
Well, I found I have a question.
Sure.
Looking at the history. I'm just curious as to why, basically, the, the actuals are about capable as voted on. And for FY '18, are there still more premiums that we have to pay than what we've already spent?
Yeah, and I can't give you a good answer to that question, maybe Don can.
FY '18 actuals are only half the year, so that's, you know, that's only half your year there.
Okay.
And the, the increase that you're seeing had to do when we added our retirees up to a $10,000 policy.
Oh, okay.
That made an increase in the premiums. So it went from like $533 a month to $1,300 a month. So that caused the large increase when we did that.
I forgot about that. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? TA?
TA.
Okay. Next is Department 945, town insurances, and that's our property casualty coverage along with our workers' comp. And we're only expecting a 1% increase in that budget or $2,500.
Questions? TA?
Yeah. Okay. So, the last thing I have on the budget update for you is the spreadsheet, the Ross spreadsheet. And this is Terry Williams' spreadsheet, as you know. Maybe we've come up with that in the last couple of weeks here, so Terry kindly sent me his latest update, so that'll give you all the budgets approved by both the Select Board and the Finance Committee through the last Wednesday. You can see, if you just scroll the bottom line, that we are adequately under our levy limit, and are still headed for about 1.5% increase in the tax rate coming fiscal year. As you know, we were certified, our free cash was certified, a little bit more than we had anticipated in our earlier estimates.
Any questions? Take your time. Anything more on budgets, or you want to say?
I'm down for no questions.
Okay, the draft for the annual town meeting warrant.
This is the, essentially, the same town meeting warrant with only one change. This is just like the one you saw the last time I met with you and showed you the warrant. Let me point out the difference. If you go to Article 5, to have done this in the strike 2 version, Article 5 was the proposal to lift the APR on that four-acre parcel at the corner of Cleveland and North Street. Given that, it looks like we may be able to use that parcel, larger parcel across the street of about 9.5 acres. Town council has drafted for us an Article 5. You can see that inserted, so we deleted the former Article 5, we've added a new Article 5, which merely transfers the care and custody of that particular parcel from the treasure for tax title to the Select Board acting as the Parks Commission to use it for recreational purposes.
Sounds good, huh?
Sounds great.
Okay, so, yeah, we're not even going to think about the, the one in the APR at this point, correct?
There's no need to.
Absolutely not.
Yeah, so if there are no further reservations on this, I'm going to, then I'll give it to, you can approve a subject to review of town council. I'll get to town council one morning. We'll finalize it.
I'll make a motion when we approve this for, for it on the town council.
Is it, you're talking about Article 5?
The board hasn't been sent to town.
Okay.
Yep.
Should we wait until we talk about Article 5?
Yeah, definitely.
Before we vote on it?
Before we send it, sure.
Yeah, okay. Just hold on to that for one minute, or five minutes. Okay. Item 9, continued discussion on established playing fields. Glenn, you are here.
Thank you very much for indulging me in putting that timeline.
Yep, John, you want to go ahead and explain?
Are you going to take this off?
Okay.
Trying to make it as quick as possible. Obviously, as the board knows, and you've probably had a chance to look at the packet that's in your folder, that there's been a change in location. Another piece of property more desirable that's located across the street on Route 9. It encompasses 9.3 acres, I believe. And according to our engineers, an engineer who has donated his time and did these sketches that are before you, that is perfectly suitable for our needs, i.e. playing fields. Nothing else has changed. There's still a demonstrated need for playing fields by the youth sports programs of Dalton. Safety concerns have been addressed in depth by Mr. Lagerwell. Previously, he sent you a letter to all members of the board.
Yep.
And I still have it. If somebody hadn't had a chance to read theirs or forgot it, I have some extra copies. And we're talking about, as Ken said, this article will appear on the annual town meeting warrant. It's an opportunity at that time to engage and ask more depth questions. At that point in time, we will have a clearer picture, hopefully the snow will be gone by then, of what exactly we're going to be uncovered by up there. But at this point in time, based on Mrs. Scholies' advice, there may be a minimal permitting need because of the driveway. He thinks it may be within 200 feet of, but that's a minor issue. Other than that, an informal ad hoc committee, which I hope the board will make permanent, has been working diligently raising funds or designing methodology for raising funds, eliciting donations of men, material, and labor, and organizing for a full-scale effort as soon as the snow clears, with the anticipation of the facility being ready for the late, late spring, early summer, and fall cycle lacrosse. Correct me, wait until lacrosse season?
We start in about tomorrow.
Yeah, you're right. Well, have it up there. Bring your snowshoes. Bring your snowshoes. All right. But at any rate, at least minimal for the youth football leagues this fall. I think the board is very familiar with the proposal and supports it for being on the town meeting warrant, and...
But do we have any idea of the cost? What is the actual cost to the town for this and the ongoing cost? You just say that it's going to save us some money at one point here, but I don't see any numbers. I don't see anyone. In addition, I think there's more to one stream up there.
This is according to, I'm not going to come here and argue with you yet, but this is according to...
I'm just answering the question, what is it going to cost?
What?
This is going to cost the town if we do this. What is the cost?
I see the cost being minimal.
Yeah, okay, what is, what is the definition of minimum?
A double thousand dollars.
A year, a week, what?
Well, for initial potentially materials and labor that isn't by donation. And as far as ongoing expenses, they're probably, it's already insured for town, for liability because it's town property. There may be a slight change in the premium for that because the use has changed.
Yeah.
Not certain of what that is, but Ken will know it soon enough, minimally.
But will we have all the numbers for the town meeting?
All of it are available, absolutely.
Can I make a suggestion, John?
Yep.
Let me handle this, something like the old Dalton High, and this committee come back and give us a report.
We're going to have this under...
Of their, of how it's going to be funded, what the numbers are going to cost.
Absolutely.
And give us a report so we know what's going on.
Bob, and that, well, they haven't had any formal sessions yet, but with the, I'm hopeful in the next couple of weeks they get appointed, in the next couple of meetings they get appointed formally. Absolutely. They'll be on a very tight leash reporting, either through myself or through Mr. Lagerwell. Hopefully, he's appointed chairman. All the ramifications of this proposal.
Can you get us a list of names for the next meeting and let's appoint this committee and get them going?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Lagerwell at this point. Glenn, did you bring that list with you?
I don't, I have the list up here. I don't have it yet. Well, currently, right now, I do have, I have spoken with eight individuals who are from across sections of the town, who are willing to participate in this. My hope is to get all the required information to the board for the next meeting, and then we can sit down and go through all the information. This is in a very fast-moving, ongoing process. I appreciate everybody's input on this. I've got some great letters, some great emails from, from a lot of different people and the board, and the cooperation from the board on this. So, but I will subliminally say that it's, it's in its infancy. We just learned about the property. We just got the schematic, the initial schematic back from Mr. Scholies. It was very positive. And so now the next step is to, as Mr. Holt said, let's look at funding, let's look at funding sources. With the goal of, I agree, I got a couple emails, and I agree, I think I would like to see this cost minimal to the town, and I think we have the means and capabilities in this town to do it. So, you know, as far as raising taxes or costing the taxpayers, I've been looking at several grants with, with Becky Slick. There's lots of funding sources out there. There's private funding sources through the Craft Foundation, the NFL Grassroots has their foundation. The CBR, I'm not thinking of any, the Community Block Grant. Things of that nature. So we're going to explore every possibility. As I've said, I can't sit there and say there will be no cost to the town. I'd like it to say that, but I can't because that would be irresponsible on my part. We don't know yet, we're not at that stage yet to say, well, you know, we may need certain funding here, but that's something that can be worked out, and we're more than willing to have open discussion on.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to have a full report, so when we go to the town meeting with this, everybody is going to vote on this, we'll have all the facts on this.
Mr. Scholies has volunteered his time to put together a presentation work as a, he will not be, he's not a member of the board, the advisory board, but he will be a consultant. He's volunteered his time to be a consultant and address any issues, conservation issues, financial issues, using his expertise and background to give us as much information as possible for that meeting. And he will have a presentation ready for it.
Perfect.
Ken, how much does it cost to move this forward, to put on the town warrant?
Nothing.
Nothing. So we'd have the opportunity for the residents to decide if this is important for them?
Right.
Dislike Mark.
John?
I like the idea, for the idea, however, we had, and my only concern is volunteer work, and I expressed this to you before, but is that we ran into this, kind of this issue with the senior center with volunteers. A lot of people want to volunteer their time and efforts and abilities, but we couldn't have them actually work because of certain liabilities with the town. What I would like to find out also is in what areas volunteers can volunteer and work, what we can accept, what we can't accept for work from the volunteers. And I think it's more, I hate to say it, I think it's more of a legal, legal issue than anything else, that that's what we went through before, Ken?
Yeah, I wrote a whole report out, I'll see if I can find it about. I mean, the general recommendation from the state is that volunteers do simple things that we're pretty sure they have some expertise in and they won't get hurt doing that. So if they do major construction, typically get a performance bond on that. So if you have volunteers doing construction and the construction doesn't come out right, then we have to correct the defects and there's really no recourse, we're not going to sue volunteers, of course. And if you want to protect yourself from, you know, do we get, that's one of the questions, do we get volunteers that are to sign waivers or licenses, hold promises, that kind of thing? But I'll dig out what I had so that, so that this board and the committee will have some idea of what's recommended by the state.
Yeah, if in, if in fact, say, we had to put a request for bids, particular work on this, if there was one of these volunteers who was certified in the work and met all the criteria for the contractor, and he actually, or that person or that, that business put a bid in of zero, is that acceptable? Or can you find that out? You know what I'm saying?
If we had to put in a bid, well...
Maybe they can put it for a dollar.
I can, I can tell you this. Someone who owns a business can volunteer his services, but he can't volunteer the services of employees, and they have to be paid prevailing wage.
Okay. Thank you.
I think this is a great, a great opportunity for Dalton to get some much-needed playing fields, and my biggest happiness is we're getting away from contention of the APR, which is, makes me relax a lot more, I'm a lot more comfortable with this area up there. Number one, Glenn pointed out a good thing, people coming out of that, they won't be crossing Route 9, they'll be coming back to Dalton on Route 9s, so that's a big safety factor. And it gets away from all those cars at Pine Grove Park. I mean, people, that's an accident waiting to happen.
It'd be huge over there.
So, and honestly, I mean, the soccer fields right now are in the cemetery, so...
Yeah.
We need to, we need to address this.
People don't believe that, you know?
No, I know, John, I totally agree with you. And this is an opportunity, I mean, there's room up there, probably for even a couple more if we had to put them in down the road. But this is a great opportunity, Glenn, and I appreciate you guys taking it under.
This, this particular sketch, does it incorporate the entire nine acres?
Yes.
The sketch with the project on it, yeah, the nine acres.
Well, I realize, yeah, but this sketch, this sketch of fields and parking lots, that's not the entire nine acres.
Uh, it's pretty, yes.
Well, because it's only two fields in it, but there's a lot of parking, that's for sure.
And that's, that was, in talking to Mr. Scholies, that was something, because of the issues at Pine Grove, it can be, you know, and this is something with the advisory committee, that was an initial, he did that on his own, you know, and he said, okay, let's, let's throw something out just so we can kind of see and get a general overview of what can and may fit in there. That's 150 parking spaces.
Right.
You know, do we go to 100 and then expand onto that half field to a second field? Do we move things more in line? Do we keep the picnic area? All that stuff is, that's something that obviously an advisory committee can all sit down with him and go over, so.
When's the next meeting?
When is the next week?
Mr. Chairman? Can I tell you that I will come to this board each and every meeting that we have and report to the board as a matter of course, the status, the progress, any figures available by the advisory committee.
Okay, let's, let's start with getting some names and committee files.
Yeah, we have all the names at our heads, but we'll, this week after tomorrow, we'll have a list and submit it to the town manager for their appointment.
For approval, okay.
Yeah. We even volunteered Mark. Very excellent.
I was voluntold. That happened to me too, when I did the town boundaries.
We were too old that day.
Okay, is there any other comments anyone wants to make?
I would. Hi. Hi, Glenn. So we've been corresponding, and I thank you, and I am glad to see it not on the APR land, and I just want to add my voice to a concern that the numbers, the real hard numbers... land, and I just wanna add my voice to a concern that the numbers, the real hard numbers can be, or at least good estimates of real costs are worked out, because I've listened to you and there's a lot of vagueness around numbers. I hear the legions maybe gonna ask for some money, and we're gonna do this over here, and we're gonna have a tax increase here, and there are anticipated costs, capital improvements that's gonna increase, you know, sort of things are thrown out, like, like this is just something like numbers on a piece of paper, but it really isn't. These are people's lives in our town that may not be able to afford, you know, the increase in the tax or whatever it is that our town has to, has to do. And there are certain things we have to do and certain things we don't have to do, and as much as I am in favor of more playing fields and all that, I just think that we have to be extremely mindful, and it's the only responsible thing for us, like we're to do, to be extremely mindful of the costs, the real costs, as much as we might want something.
Mr. Chairman, I just say one thing. I take great pleasure in sitting on this board, and I know that this board and past boards have always been mindful of every single set that has been accounted for and spent wisely, both in the past and in now, and I congratulate you on that.
So I just wanna say in response to that, that I sat through a meeting probably a month ago where you all voted to spend about $6,000 or $7,000 more on electricity over the next 20 years for no particular reason, except that, according to the consultant, it made a nice story.
We're getting off the subject.
Okay, but in terms, so I'm just very, can tell you why I have concerns, okay? So, I don't think that's unreasonable.
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman. Someone reminded me, oh, John, it may be pre-gave your time, no, but Ken would remember this. There already is a committee established to look into new playing fields, and it was headed up by Mary Cherry, this is about six years ago, and I think Matt Morrison was on and a couple others. I would be hopeful, if you remind me, we put it on the agenda, to disband that committee.
Okay.
It never had any findings, they had some meetings, but they never went anywhere. Remember that, Ken?
I do.
Would you advise us to disband that?
Yeah, we'll check to see if maybe we did disband it.
We have, we should do that first before we appoint a new one. Any other?
I'd like to raise a question. I don't know if you can answer it now. What is our debt right now to the town? And what's our anticipated debt when we have some of the big projects coming, like renovation of a high school?
Well, I think that was typical of just what you said, throwing vague numbers around. I don't have hard numbers. What are your anticipated numbers on that?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to address that.
Well, you must know at least what our debt is right now.
Well, we aren't sure. With our maturing debt and interest, that was our budget.
Ken, could you just refresh that?
Let's see if I can find the number. Yeah, it appears that our total debt right now is just over $400,000.
$400,000. All right, anything else about the playing fields?
Just over, excuse me, just over $400,000 or?
$369.
Oh, I should say, or projected debt payments. If you look, John, on page two.
I don't, probably not, I think it's a debt.
Down the middle column.
Have we gone before this topic?
Yep, in the little box there, here he has a calculator.
Oh, wait a second, what are you looking, oh, you're looking there, I'm looking here. Sorry, never mind. Just looking at a different sheet.
So, Ken, did you say those were payments or is it debt?
That's debt service, so those are payments altogether.
So we pay $400,000?
Yeah, and, yeah, we have schedules with that, but we don't have it in front of us, so it's hard to just, you know, give you a-
So, I'm sorry, we pay $400,000 every year on our debt?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, we need to, we need to stay on, I'm sorry, Henry, we need to stay on. Anything else about the playing fields?
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, now we should go back and vote on the town warrant?
Make a motion to approve the warrant forward at the town council for first.
Second.
No, this one.
Okay, motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items for future agendas. Anyone?
Thanks, Don.
Yes, thanks, Don.
I would hope that we could get back to eliminating the option of select board members-
Yeah, John did some work on that. John did some work on that, Ken's gonna review it.
Okay.
Actually, it's in, it's in the hands of town council.
So we might have it for the next meeting?
I want it, I asked that it be done before the end of March.
So?
I hope so.
That would be great. Thank you for doing that, John. Thank you.
That's for attorney's schedule, I'm not going to-
Yes, right, okay, you can't speak for him, and that certainly would be reasonable.
Right.
Okay.
Anything else for future agendas?
Could we make sure that it's been off the agenda, that we continue to have the Wakona building project and school committee reports?
We need to get that back on, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, anything else? Okay, remark for the select board? Ken?
A remark about the school committee then. They passed their, they passed their final budget. It didn't change from the, the last time I reported on it, so the assessment's still the same. The Wakona Building Committee is, did meet this past, around the 15th, I was unable to attend, but the next meeting is gonna be the 12th, and everything is proceeding as planned. There are no major roadblocks at this point in time.
Thank you, John. Now we'll hit that back up here, Jim. Okay, is there any other remarks? The announcements. The new Veterans Agents Office hours are Wednesdays from 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. at the Town Hall, and from 11:40 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at the Senior Center. Services for Dalton veterans are now available Monday through Friday through the North Adams Veteran Service Department. Please call 413-662-3040. Public Power is now the town supplier for the municipal electricity program. You'll see that name as a supplier of electricity on your ever-source bill, unless you have another supplier. To opt out or opt out of the program, go online to colonialpowergroup.com/dalton or call Public Power at 1-800-830-2944. The Dalton Police Department is reminding citizens of Dalton that winter parking ban is still on from 1 a.m. to 6 a.m., which went into effect November 15, 2017, and will be in effect until April 15, 2018. I hold office hours by appointment. Please call in the select board at the Town Hall. For further information, please call Judy at 684-6111, extension 11. Please note that Dalton's official meetings, postings, agendas and minutes can be viewed at mygovernment, mytowngovernment.org, 01226. State Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at the Dalton Town Hall, 462 Main Street in the Callahan Room on Tuesdays from 9 a.m. to 4 p.m., with the exception of the third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesday, office hours are 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. at the Town Hall, and from 1 p.m. to 4 p.m. at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach them at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. The Billy Inspector's office hours are Monday, Wednesday and Thursday from 8 a.m. to 5 p.m., and on Tuesday from 8 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. I declare-
There's no need for an exact session.
Okay, okay, then I will-
I'll make a motion later.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm just being honest with you.